All right. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the meeting of the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District Board of Trustees to order for December 16, 2021. Ask the Acting Secretary, Carter.
President Brown.
Here.
Mr. Sulek here. Mayor DeGeeter. Mayor Abachi.
President.
Ms. Dumas. Mr. Joyce.
Here.
Mayor Alai.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Next, we need to approve the minutes from our December 2, 2021, meeting.
I'll make that motion, Mr. President.
Motion by Mayor Abachi.
Second.
Second by Mayor Alai. Question. There's no question. The minutes will stand approved as they are printed. Thank you very much. Now, ask the Chief Executive Officer if anyone has signed up to speak during the public session, public session portion of our general, a specific agenda topic.
They have not, Mr. President.
And we will have your report, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Beginning with the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, we have 22 active cases among district employees, and this brings us to 152 confirmed positive cases since the beginning of the pandemic, with 130 folks recovered and returned to work. We also have 10 employees with COVID-like symptoms who are awaiting their test results, and we have no employees remaining at home because a member of their household has tested positive. So with this significant increase in cases among district employees, we will reinstate our mask requirements for all employees regardless of vaccination status, beginning Monday, December 20. We will also increase enforcement of our mask requirements to ensure, to ensure that folks are wearing their masks correctly and consistently. In addition, the COVID Health Screening App, which we all, you know, really became fond of in the COVID pandemic, will be back to ensure that sick folks are not coming to work. And this will also roll out next week, as well as our mask requirement. We'll also make other necessary changes as the need arises, and as everyone knows, we continue to track this very closely. So moving on, at US EPA's request, NACWA, as everyone knows, our, our federal advocacy group, has convened a group of their board members, including myself, to provide guidance to US EPA as they roll out the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act funding, or the $55 billion that we've all been very excited about for water infrastructure. So we met internally with the NACWA committee to prepare for that US EPA conversation, and we will meet with Andrew Sawyer, the Director of US EPA's Office of Wastewater Management, on December 21, so next week. Our goals with this dialogue with NACWA and US EPA is to ensure funding for district projects and to ensure funding for member community projects, as had been identified through the sanitary sewer system evaluations, which we have done, and have been supported with funding from you all through the Member Community Infrastructure Program. So we are advocating both for district projects and also to ensure that funding is available for member community projects. We have asked US EPA to provide guidance to state revolving loan programs so that they provide grants to the extent possible, as opposed to additional loans, and that they also make it easy for utilities such as us to continue to work with and support our member communities. So we and NACWA have both sent letters to US EPA with these requests. We've also shared those letters with our congressional offices and other stakeholders, and we'll keep you posted as this effort with US EPA and Ohio EPA continues to develop. And finally, as you know, each year, we recognize employee milestones across the district with our service awards. Due to the pandemic, we've done our 2020 and 2021 service awards through video and individual recognition. The video each year is a team effort with MCs among district staff, and it's been led by Angela Smith, our HR specialist, and members of HR and communication. Our 2020 efforts were recognized with two awards. The Gold Cleveland Rock Award in the category of corporate events from the Public Relations Society of America, and then an International Best Practice Award from the Public Relations Global Network for Internal Communications. So congratulations to all the staff involved with that. And that's my report.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions for the CEO? Okay. If there are none, then we'll move to our action items. Let's start with our authorization to advertise. Request for authorization to publish notice calling for bids in accordance with Ohio Revised Code Section 6119.10 for one-year requirement contract for grounds maintenance services with an anticipated expenditure of $155,000. Request for authorization to publish notice calling for bids in accordance with Ohio Revised Code Section 6119.10 for three-year requirement contract for centrifuge building, centrifuge rebuilding services at Southerly and Westerly Wastewater Treatment Centers with anticipated expenditure of $819,000. Request for authorization to publish notice calling for bids in accordance with Ohio Revised Code Section 6119.10 for a two-year requirement contract for green infrastructure maintenance services with an anticipated expenditure of $550,000. And then finally, request for authorization to publish notice calling for bids in accordance with Ohio Revised Code Section 6119.10 for the Blatchgate Creek Bank Stabilization Project, anticipated expenditure of $390,000.
Move to adopt 394 through 397-21.
Motion by Mr. Joyce.
Second.
Second by Mayor Abachi. Question. Just if you could, on 39621, I'm sure this is our efforts to meet the requirements in our consent decree for the 44 million gallons storage. Just in terms of, is this going to tell us, are we looking for outcomes, or are we doing maintenance, restoring capacity? What are we trying to get accomplished here? And as I understand it, our inability to meet the target is still something that we will have to do through some process, so.
Okay. I'm going to take the first half of this, turn it to Davana, on what our modeling has shown us about green infrastructure performance. This is the next iteration. We have external contracts to maintain our large green infrastructure facilities. This is our next iteration. We have two-year contracts. So this is, our first iteration runs out in March of next year, so we want to gear up and get new services under contract with the district. The purpose of this resolution request is to, or this project is, and you can see the services that, that are provided under this contract. It's really grounds maintenance at the green infrastructure sites to make sure that you're, you know, you've got to control invasive species, you've got to mow, prune, do the right things to make sure that the, the plant base in these facilities are functional, there's, there's trash issues at times, snow removal, cleanup activities, spring and fall, fertilization, all kinds of stuff. So it's really a care and feeding of the green infrastructure site. As to the performance, you know, and as we maintain facilities, we're always looking at the facilities to make sure structurally there are no issues. And if there is an issue, something is a little off, then we deal with it on a case-by-case basis. I'll turn it to Davana about the functionality and what we've learned on the performance of these green infrastructure facilities.
Thank you, Frank. President Brown, members of the board, first and foremost, part of the requirements of the decree are to maintain these sites, too, that we construct. So this contract helps us accomplish that portion of our requirements. In regards to the actual performance and the requirements under Appendix 3, so yes, we're required to achieve 44 million gallons of additional CSO control above what the green infrastructure is going to achieve. Back as early as 2014, we knew that we were not going to be able to do that with green infrastructure, just from the cost standpoint of what it was going to, to take to do it, and even just even the feasibility of achieving that 44 million gallons with green infrastructure. So we have been in communication with EPA on this fact since 2014. With that said, we have implemented nine projects in total. The total cost is about $60 million, and that's going to achieve about 9 million gallons of that 44. So we obviously have a fairly large gap that we have to make up with corrective action. And so back as early as 2014, we started to look at what that corrective action would be, and we were really preemptive in trying to achieve that. So we have since upsized the Done Valley Tunnel, which is fully in operation. We're also, we also upsized the Wesley Tunnel, which is currently in construction, as well as the Shoreline Tunnel, which is also currently in construction. We have found out very recently, as part of the post-construction monitoring efforts, and as well some new information from EPA, even with that corrective action, we're going to fall short of the 44 million gallons. So we're in some more recent conversations with them and what that means going forward, and what that may look like in regards to a needed modification of the decree.
Okay. I appreciate that update. I can remember years ago, I think being at, at WEF Tech and talk, having conversations with the EPA, and we were considered, I guess, pioneers at that point in time. We were kind of out front with only one or two other communities and trying to create a path for, for green infrastructure. So we, we've executed on what we thought would happen. As we find out, in hindsight, we were 100% on target in terms of understanding the value and the efficiency of gray infrastructure versus green infrastructure. So it looks nice, but in terms of maintenance and capture, it's still a long way to go. So I guess I'll stop there as far as my, my own personal observation, but I remember having that debate among the board even as to whether we should lean more heavily on more green infrastructure versus gray. So it looks like we made the right decision as we've moved forward and gone down the road here. All right. Thank you.
39421 through 39721.
Thank you. All right. Let's go, authorization to issue request for proposal. All right. Let's do it this way. Let's take 421 by itself. That's a request for authorization entered into service agreements with 10 watershed organizations under the 2022 Watershed Partners Service Agreement Program to provide...
Skip to...
Did I? Oh, I got ahead of myself.
Sorry.
That's what happens when I'm flipping the screen up and down. Yeah, okay. All right. Let's back up. Let's go authorization to issue request for proposal. How about that? All right. Authorization to issue an RFP in accordance with Ohio Revised Code Chapter 153 for as-needed engineering professional services under General Engineering Services. Treatment, GES-10 and GSS-Collections, which is GES-11, proposed agreements, and then a request for authorization to issue an RFP in accordance with Ohio Revised Code Chapter 153 for as-needed design and construction administration/resident project representation services under a testing and construction inspection services proposed agreement.
Move to adopt 398 and 39921.
Motion by Mr. Sulek.
Second.
Was that Mr. Joyce?
Both.
Okay. Tie goes to you. All right. So let's see. Any questions? Just if you could briefly, because these are standard contracting opportunities that we let from time to time. I do remember we've talked in the past about how we evaluate the performance of these folks over the, the life of the contract, so we have an indication as to their ability to perform in the future. Also, always concerned about our ability, not only to attract some of the larger firms that have national reputations, but our ability to also have contracting ability and opportunities for people in our service area or region. So is, is that something we evaluate, monitor as we go through these processes?
So President Brown, members of the board, I'll take the second part of your statement first, in regards to the makeup of our teams. So again, this is a great tool that we've put in place over the past couple of years to have these on-call services for smaller type efforts in regards to design efforts or evaluations, as well as sort of more emergency-type activities. And so these are like on-call services that really require a capacity component in regards to the ability of these consulting firms to respond to us. And then they also have a wide range of needed expertise. And just the nature of that alone has historically seen that these contracts are awarded to a prime firm, but they have multiple subcontractors as part of their team, both national-level firms as well as regional-level firms. So just by the nature of the contract really supports your point, President Brown, in regards to opportunities to many. And of course, like on all of our professional services contracts, we also have the 20% BOP goal, and of course, all those BOP firms are regional. In regards to your second question on performance, over the past few years, we have established as part of our just day-to-day management of these contracts, review, performance reviews with our professional consulting firms. So that applies to these GS contracts as well. Through the life of the contracts, we do meet with them, provide performance feedback to them, and it also gives them an opportunity to provide feedback to us as well.
All right. Thank you. Any other question, comment? There being no filed objection, they're approved.
398 and 39921.
Thank you. Now, let's do authorization entered into agreement. Three of those. We're going to take 400-21 first. That's a request for authorization entered to service agreement, tenured watershed organizations under the 2022 Watershed Partners Service Agreement Program to provide technical services in support of the district's strategic plan goal of community partnerships and varying amounts as presented, total combination combined amount not to exceed $390,000.
Move for adoption of resolutions 421.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Alai. Second by Mayor Abachi. Question? No question. I'm going to ask for a roll call, please.
Mayor Alai?
Yes.
Mr. Joyce?
Yes.
Mayor Abachi?
Yes.
Mr. Sulek?
Yes.
President Brown?
abstain.
Resolution passes.
Thank you very much. Let's continue. Request for authorization entered to professional services agreement with Cold Water Consulting LLC for Mill Creek Restoration Near Cricket Lane and Orangeville Heights Project in amount not to exceed $731,286. Also request for authorization entered to an agreement with Cleveland Housing Network, well, CHN Housing Network, Housing Partners, to administrate the district's customer assistance program and sewer repair program for a five-year period in amount not to exceed $3,750,000 for the energy program and amount not to exceed $1,439,394 for the utility assistance program for a combined total not to exceed $5,189,394.
Move to adopt 401 and 402-21.
Motion by Mr. Joyce.
Second.
Second by Mayor Alai. Question, just if you could. I, I know that we've been doing these programs well a while, and particularly, and I'll call it enhanced version since the pandemics come on, that dollars have been made available, et cetera. I'm always concerned about, A, the capacity of firms to produce at a level that allows as many people who qualify for these, or should qualify for these programs, to be entered and processed through the system in a timely manner, realizing that, you know, utility bills in general, but in, and in specific to water and sewer are very challenging just because of rate structures, et cetera. So we put these fail safes, I'll call them, in place to help parts of our service area population who meet, who qualify. So just if we could have some discussion around performance or ability to monitor performance or add resources as necessary. How do you plan to manage that as we move forward?
Thank you, President Brown, and members of the board, and good afternoon. We, as you said, have entered into these agreements with CHN Housing Partners for a number of years. We do it in five-year increments, and our current agreement will be up at the end of this year. And so this is a five-year agreement going forward. We have taken into account your concerns and consideration around capacity, and in our new contract, we have included some additional resources to assist the organization in being able to manage the influx of new applicants. As you know, with the adaptations of our rate and our affordability cost-saving programs, we've added to adaptations which increase the number of our residents and customers who are able to, to be eligible for our programs. And so you're right, we want to make sure that they're going to be processed and, and actually get that money that they are entitled to receive. And so we have worked very closely with CHN to make sure that that is, in fact, possible for them, that they are resourced in a way that, that can accommodate that increase. Also, in this new proposal is an increase in the plumbing assistance. We understand that the needs for the plumbing assistance in the community are greater, and the cost for those programs has increased. And so we did put additional dollars in to make sure that those folks who are having plumbing issues without the ability to address those issues could receive that assistance. So those two things are in there. In terms of reporting, we have a daily report that we receive, a monthly and a quarterly report, and we are also serving together CHN and, and the sewer district on a number of committees so that we have regular contact. I do want to take a moment to introduce two members from the CHN Housing Partner Staff, Matt Sattler, he is Vice President of Operations, and Robin Williams, who is the Program Manager in Charge of Water and Sewer. So we work very closely with them, and they have been great partners to work with. And they are available to answer any questions that you have that I can answer.
No, you're doing pretty good.
Love you.
Thank you. Glad to have you here. Just a, did you say, or do we know that if the need to add additional resources is required, that, that could be done through this process as well?
I'm sorry. Say again?
Augment staffing.
Augmenting staffing, yes. Yes. That's exactly what we've done. We've provided one additional staff for CHN to handle our programs specifically.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much. There are no further questions? Filed objection? They approved?
401 and 40221.
Thank you very much. Let's go to authorization to enter into contract, beginning with request for authorization entered to a one-year requirement contract with PVS Chemical Solutions, Inc. for sodium bisulfate solutions at all wastewater treatment plants in amount not to exceed $279,950. Also request for authorization entered into a construction grant with Akron Building and Outdoor Maintenance, Inc. doing business as river reach construction for the Baldwin Creek stabilization near Abbey Road project in amount not to exceed $763,490.49. And then finally, request for authorization entered into a construction contract with Tucson, Inc. for Chippewa Creek Stream Stabilization near Broadview Road Project in amount not to exceed $1,595,567.
Move resolutions 403 through 405. Mr. President.
Motion by Mayor Abachi.
Second.
Second by Mr. Joyce.
President Brown, excuse me. Sorry. I just want to make sure that the minutes pick that upright on 40421. Construction contract, it sounded a little like construction grant, so I didn't want that to be the case.
Which one?
So just clarifying, the 404-21 is a construction contract.
Construction contract. Yeah. Okay. All right. For the record, okay. Any other question, comment? There being no filed objection, it's approved? They are approved, I should say.
403 through 40521.
Thank you very much. All right. Let's go to authorization to amend agreement. This is our request for authorization to amend agreement number 20006415 with Stan Tech Consulting Services, Inc. for Westerly Sludge Pump Station and Forest Main Project to remove work scope specific to Sludge Pump Station and Forest Main and add work scope for centrifuge rehabilitation and truck area loadout improvements to modify the project name to the Westerly Sludge Handling Improvements Project to better align with the modified scope and by decreasing the agreement amount by $675,614.86, thereby bringing the total agreement amount not to exceed $4,473,336.14.
Move for adoption of resolution 40621.
Motion by Mayor Alai.
Second.
Second by Mayor Abachi. Question. I think I understand this well enough. Moving on, there's no question with filed objection, it's approved?
40621.
Thank you. Let's go authorization of emergency contract modification. All right. Let's go with, this is request for authorization of an emergency modification of construction contract number 20000730 with A.W. Farrell and Sons, Inc. for district-wide roof improvement project to increase the contract scope to include timed critical roof repairs and replacements threatened by roof material supply chain issues and necessary to avoid building impact and damage to critical equipment, houses in the buildings, to include a 466-day time extension and to increase the contract amount by $1,566,000, thereby bringing the total contract amount not to exceed $4,408,404.12, and to declare such modification to be a real and present emergency, awarded without formal bidding and, or, and building, bidding or advertising. Okay.
Move to adopt 407-21.
Motion by Mr. Joyce.
Second.
Second by Mayor Alai. Just question, so as I read and understand, this, this is driven by supply chain. Any, any other issue or consideration in terms of time? Does time add any other additional risk, et cetera, to us?
So President Brown, members of the board, yes, this request for an emergency modification to this contract is driven by supply chain issues and uncertainty in the market as it relates to roofing. We actually had a plan to go out for a second construction contract for roofing that we pulled due to those concerns and not being able to properly estimate and put something out for bid. But we do have four roofs that the condition of those roofs have gone to a point that some action needs to be done within the next year. And the only way we can guarantee that that work can be done in the next year is to order those supplies by the end of this year. And so that's why we're asking the board to authorize this emergency modification to the existing roofing contract to add this scope so that they can proceed in ordering the needed materials by the end of 2021.
So actually, we, by taking this action, we would avail ourselves to the opportunity of not just the supply paying time, supply chain timeline, but also financially as well, possibly.
Yes, definitely financially from the standpoint of these roofs are allowed to deteriorate, you know, any further within the next year or so, I mean, more damage to the buildings themselves, the equipment inside, and all of those factors. In regard...
I was speaking from the perspective of that, generally speaking, in construction season, when one thing goes from one year to the next, you can automatically add, you know, 15, 20% cost to the project, so.
Yes. Yes, that's exactly right.
All right. Got my attention. All right. Any other questions on that? There are none? Filed objections, approved?
40721.
Thank you very much. All right. Officially come to my favorite part of the agenda, property-related transaction. Here we go. All right. Let's start with authorization to appropriate one permanent sewer easement, one temporary easement at the property known as Permanent Parcel Number 10402014 located at 1160 Marquette Street, City of Cleveland, owned by BCP Cleveland LLC. Necessary... at 1160 Marquette Street, City of Cleveland, owned by BCP Cleveland LLC, necessary for construction and maintenance of Shoreline Consolidation Sewer Project, and to deposit the compensation of $32,650 with the Cog County Probate Court. Also request for Authorization to appropriate three permanent sewer easements, three temporary easements at the property known as Permanent Parcel Number 10501004 located at 1155 Marquette Street located in the City of Cleveland, owned by P&amp;R Ventures, Inc., necessary for construction and maintenance of Shoreline Consolidation Sewer Project, and to deposit the compensation of $61,250 with the Cog County Probate Court. Request for Authorization to acquire one permanent sewer easement at property known as Permanent Parcel Numbers 10504016, 10504017, and 10504018 located at 5470 Lake Court in the City of Cleveland, owned by SCN Services LLC, necessary for construction and maintenance of Shoreline Consolidation Sewer Project with total consideration of $1,400. And finally, a request for Authorization to acquire one permanent stormwater easement, one temporary easement at the property known as Permanent Parcel Number 77112054 located at 4908 North Randall Drive located in the Village of North Randall, owned by Wanda Webb and Doris Jean Webb, necessary for construction and maintenance of Bear Creek Covert Improvements Project, total consideration $3,200.
Move to adopt 408 through 411, 21.
Motion by Mr. Sulik.
Second.
Second by Mr. Joyce, is there a question? There's no question without objection, they are approved.
408 through 411, 21.
Thank you very much. Let's go through use code matters. This is starting with the adopting the findings of hearing officer with regard to sewer count of Ayo Tunde Olohu, Sewer District Hearing Number 21008, that the customer's request be denied, adopting the findings of hearing officer in regard to stormwater service count of James Shury, Sewer District Hearing Number 21-009, that the customer's request be denied, and adopting the findings of hearing officer with regard to the sewer count of Allegro Realty, Sewer District Hearing Number 21010, that the customer's request be denied.
Move for adoptions of Resolutions 412 through 414, 21.
Motion by Mayor Ali.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sulik, is there a question? There's no question without objection, they are approved.
412 through 414, 21.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to Approval of Policy Amendments. This is for the approval of amendments to the district's travel expense reimbursement policy as presented and delegation to the Chief Financial Officer for the authority to make future amendments to the policy as deemed necessary by the Chief Financial Officer.
Move to adopt 415-21.
Motion by Mr. Joyce.
Second.
Second by Mayor Bachi, is there a question?
I do, real quick.
Sure.
If you don't mind, is this a total rewrite? I saw a lot of redlining, so it looked like you're streamlining the process, the way I read it.
Yeah, go ahead, Ken.
Good afternoon, Mayor Ali, members of the board. This is not a total rewrite of the policy. Primarily, the updates in this policy were to incorporate a electronic reimbursement system that we implemented, you know, within the last two years. So while it looks like there's a lot of red markings, it's taking out references to old forms and implementing references to the new system. Primarily, the spirit of the policy remains the same with no substantive changes to the policy itself.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? There are none without objections to prove?
415, 21.
Thank you. And then finally, we have Authorization to Pay Fees. This is authorizing the expenditure $129,400 to the Treasurer State of Ohio for the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency annual discharge fees for all wastewater treatment plants for the 2021 calendar year.
So moved.
Motion by Mayor Bachi.
Second.
Second by Mr. Joyce, is there a question? There's no question without objection to prove?
416, 21.
Thank you very much. That does complete our action items. Let's see, let's go to information items. We have two, Chief Legal Officer Report of Settlement and Release Agreements for a period of July through December 2021. I would recommend if you have questions or concerns that you may see the Chief Legal Officer and discuss those matters separately. Thank you. Let's go to the Program Management Status Report and Update for November 2021.
Good afternoon, President Brown, members of the board.
Good afternoon.
This is the monthly update on the capital improvement program per November 2021. With this month's update, it's a Christmas present to myself, I will not be giving you any construction highlights, but we will have a feature presentation, and that will be by Andrea Remius, and she will be giving an update on the local sewer system evaluation studies.
Okay.
So looking first at cash flow, we ended the month of November at 97% of plan. This is up from the previous month where we closed out at 95%. It looks like we will end the year fairly close to our planned cash flow. In regards to actual dollars paid out, we paid out approximately $25 million in the month of November, and we're tracking it just under $154 million. So moving on to our key performance indicators, we did complete the design of the East Lee PLC Replacement Project, and that was completed within 60 days of planned meeting the KPI. Moving on to construction level KPIs, we achieved substantial completion on the Dome Valley Storage Tunnel Project, and that was completed within 90 days of planned meeting the KPI as well. Also in construction, we closed a construction contract for the Southern Electrical Infrastructure Improvements Project. However, that was not closed within 95% of the original contract amount, so we failed to meet that KPI. But we did meet our KPI in the Business Opportunity Program goals. The goals on this project were set at 9% MBEWBE and 8% SBE, and our projected actual is 16.24% MBEWBE and 61.53% SBE in the prime contractor with none of these, so you know. So a lot of subcontracting on this project. Then looking at the work orders by change categories as a percent of construction, those came in at 8.45%, which equates about $1.5 million. And as you can see from the graphic there, the majority fell to the owner requested changes category. And then finally, we also closed a construction contract for the CSO Outfall Repairs and Improvements Project that was closed within 95% of the original contract amount meeting the KPI. However, we did not meet our Business Opportunity Program Goals KPI. District goal was set at 10% MBEWBE and 5% SBE. Projected actual was 26.27% for MBEWBE, so we did meet that portion of the goal, but we fell a little bit short on the SBE. That came as projected actual is about 4.94%, which again is just slightly under that 5%. I will point out that all these firms, MBEWBE and SBE, are all SBEs. So even though we failed to meet that individual goal, overall, a fairly good job on BOP participation. And then, again, looking at the work orders by change categories as a percent of construction, those came in at 6.85%, which equates about $137,000, and the majority of those fell to the category of differing or unforeseen site conditions. So with that, I'll take any questions the board may have on my portion of the presentation.
Questions? All right, thank you.
Andrea Remius, again, Planning Manager in Engineering Construction.
Hello, good afternoon, President Brown, members of the board.
Good afternoon.
I'll be presenting a big-picture summary of the local sewer system evaluation studies.
Okay.
So as a refresher, these are planning-level studies that are focused on the local sewer systems. It's a $40 million investment divided into four project areas, studied over the course of six years. We started off by asking all the communities what their problems were in the sewer system, focusing generally on basement backups and sanitary sewer overflows. We then used fieldwork and modeling to validate and identify new problems and develop solutions. Every community is currently in the process of receiving or has received a report specific to their community with findings and recommendations, along with a presentation. At a minimum, this will be the fourth time that we're meeting with each of these communities. The first time was to collect problems in sewer maps. We met with them to develop fieldwork protocols for while we're working in their communities. We also met with them to present our comprehensive problem evaluation and gain concurrence, and now we'll be meeting with them to present the solutions and then final documents. So as I noted, the first step in this process is to validate the problems and then also to identify any additional problems. And as a result of that identification and validation process, we found that there were 800 miles of common trench sewers, which if you recall from previous LSES presentations, so these are sewers that are built using an antiquated technique where both the storm and the sanitary sewers are constructed in the same trench. And as those sewers deteriorate over time, the sewage and the stormwater, they mix together, they overload the system, they go into the basements, and they also enter into the streams. We also found there were 22,000 homes at risk for basement flooding, 56 active SSOs, and over 2,000 septic systems that had likely reached the end of their useful lives. So this is the landscape of what the LSESs evaluated and developed solutions for. The price tag for those solutions, I'm just going to just tell you what it is, and then I'll go through, and I'll explain how those are prioritized.
Sounds like you're preparing up for sticker shockers.
I haven't actually gotten this part of the presentation down yet, so. So the total price tag is $3.4 billion. So, this is a map, and all of the pink dots, those are the project areas. For reference, the yellow area is the Noaka Environmental Justice Area. The black dots are CSOs which are being addressed under Project Clean Lake, so they're not a part of the LSES.
Which tributaries are those?
Excuse me?
Which streams? I'm looking at the black dots, trying to figure.
Oh, oh, they're on the Kaiahoga River, basically all of our streams.
The CSOs.
The CSOs.
Okay.
I think the big ones, Frank, are the Kaiahoga, and then that's Yucut Creek.
Yucut Creek.
Okay, that helps, thank you.
So as I said, the total cost is $3.4 billion, but that's over 50 years, and that's for the entire service area, all of the local system. The way that we have that prioritized, we have them categorized into three priority categories. The first category, which is $950 million worth of work, that's to address all of the problems that were told to us by the communities. So that's all of the basement backups and SSOs that were reported to us. The second category, improvements, which is the largest price tag, is $1.6 billion. And this category is to address areas of excessive inflow and infiltration. And these are the areas that are not already covered under Category 1, because a lot of the reasons that we have those Category 1 problems are because of excessive inflow and infiltration. So this category 2, this is excessive inflow and infiltration, that's not causing a local problem, but it's definitely causing problems for us, for the district, because it sends a lot of extra flow to our interceptors and to our treatment plants as well. So it's still an important category. And then the third category of $840 million worth of projects are, these are model predicted future projects. So these, you know, are more like 30 to 50 years out. The communities, these are not, these were not identified to us by the communities, they were model projected. So these are kind of future projects that might have to be done in the future. So support to the communities moving forward. In light of that price tag, the district will continue to support communities in acquiring funding. For example, you know, we've supported and awarded many district MCIP grants to these communities to address these issues. We've assisted communities in applying for American Rescue Plan Act funding, DOPWIC funding. We've also recently helped communities add their projects to the County Hazard Mitigation Plan, which makes those projects eligible for future funding as well. We will also use this information to support the communities' compliance with the Community Discharge Permit Program. And also, the LSESs have developed tools to aid the communities in these areas as well. A huge benefit that came from the LSESs outside of the recommendations and the projects is a robust online GIS resource. So this online GIS provides all the communities access to local sanitary sewer mapping, five-year hydraulic grade lines in their sewers as well as in our sewers, all the locations of the identified problems and model predicted basement backups, all the identified solutions, as well as 15,000 points of fieldwork, as well as the data that goes with that fieldwork, like manhole inspections, flow monitoring data, smoke and dye testing, et cetera. So an item of note is that while the consultant field crews were in the field performing tests and collecting data, they found 1,700 locations where they had to correct the GIS. They also found 1,200 local maintenance issues that they documented and reported to the communities. Many times, if the issue was deemed a critical safety or regulatory issue, it was immediately conveyed to the community. For example, like surcharged manholes, or where the sewer is almost completely blocked, that damaged fire hydrant. And then also in the lower right-hand corner, so in the lower right-hand corner, when the field crews were out, they saw a void forming under the road from, you know, like where the soil is being washed away. So our field crews immediately contacted the city, they came out, they repaired that sewer, fixed the road, and they stopped a potential sinkhole from just happening in the middle of, you know, regular traffic. So that was kind of a good thing. Other tools that were updated were that all of our collection system models were updated and expanded into a local system. For example, this is the Southwest Interceptor map, and the dark purple used to be what the model was, now, or included. Now the model includes, after the LSESs, includes all those blue and red pipes as well. Additionally, these updated models and having all of this information about the local systems, we, as a district, have a very comprehensive understanding of how our infrastructure is providing a level of service to the communities. Additionally, we have provided and will continue to provide copies of our models to the communities. Right now, East Cleveland, Shaker Heights, Parma, they've all received models from us. We've also converted one of our models into a more readily accessible format, the swim format. And if other communities request that from us, we would convert other models as well. And before I go, I just wanted to acknowledge the project managers for the LSESs, Bill Fussner and Lita Laban. I mean, these were huge, very complicated projects, and I think that they did a really good job. Does anyone have any questions?
A lot of information for the district and your member communities. I guess I just can't help but note the number you gave me, us, I should say, which really kind of says, even after we spend upwards of $3-plus billion to make more capacity room at the end and keep it from discharging to the Great Lakes, we still have an equal number of problems and concerns out in our member communities. The good news is we know what and where they are. Sounds like a lot of work and opportunity for a lot of lobbying to go on for some type of long-term grants program, but not just an ask at this point that's verified or backed with data that really shows we know what we can do if we had the funds, so. Good work.
Go ahead, Frank.
I think we're seeing the sobering reality of infrastructure management, right? And climate change doesn't help us. You know, this information that a lot of the local sewers are well over 100 years old, rain patterns are different, it just shows the need for sustained investment. It shows the- It shows the value of the MCIP.
It does.
Program, district funds leveraged with community funds, we've actually been able to chip away at problems. The value of the SSESs are to really target for each community the worst of the worst and develop good strategies to move forward. We said this before, we're well positioned, we're as well positioned as anybody to grab infrastructure funds, you know, and our game now is to find ways to allow regional authorities to help member communities, and we'll keep at it.
Yeah, I agree with everything you've stated. This is a lot of good work, it's a lot of great information. Early on in the MCIP program, we worked with communities to help them prioritize their priorities, so they were optimizing their spend to get value to the project. I gotta believe that even with a lot of these local concerns, they're much like ours, we're doing the big things first, and as we get further down the road, the return on the investment is going to dissipate somewhat, but it's, there's still necessary work that needs to get done, so.
All right, great, thank you. Take care of our information items. Anything for open session? How about public session on any subject matter? Anybody signed up, Madam CEO, for that?
They have not, Mr. President.
Then we did have a matter for executive session, but I think I want to hold that until we can have our other colleagues can join us in that discussion, so, you know, we'll table that for right now. So that being said, that does complete our agenda then for the day, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion, Mr. President.
Motion by Mayor Bachi.
Second.
Second by Mayor Lai, without objection, we are adjourned, thank you.